No justice, no peace.
I'm Natalia.
And I'm Ciara.
And welcome to The Take.
In yesterday's episode, we spoke with Mr. DeGeer, Mr. Esserman, and Mr. Jones about their dedication to community and student representation, involvement, and participation on the DPS school board within the district, as well as why they make great candidates.
I liked being able to hear how our candidates have been dedicating to bettering the education system within their own schools for Black and Brown students for even longer than they decided to run on the board.
I really enjoyed hearing from my candidates about what their major educational reform plans are and their personal experiences throughout the schools, their communities, and also even their homes.
So I'm sure you're all wondering what's up this week. In today's episode, we're going to be talking to some of our school board candidates and see why they want to be on the board, what changes and improvements they want to bring to DPS, and their commitment to the education of DPS students.
Welcome and thank you for joining us on The Take. Before we get started, we have to remind our listeners about our trigger alert. Ciara, can you please read the trigger alert?
If you are not 110% in support of Black Lives Matter, please dismiss yourself. If you aren't in any sorts of agreement with the systemic oppressions this country has inflicted on minorities, once again, please dismiss yourself. And if you are not willing to give every bit of power that the people so undeniably deserve, then please dismiss yourself. Because in a few moments, you will witness vast amounts of Black engagement. And if you do not dismiss yourself, the thoughts, the facts, and the feelings we're about to share will most definitely dismiss you.
Okay, so let's get into it. Thank you guys so much for being here today. Today, we have Dr. Jose Silva running for District Four, Jane Shirley running for District at Large, and Jean Fashaw running for District Four. Before we get started, can each of you provide our listeners with some information about yourselves to include what motivates you to want to become a board member?
Thank you so much, No Justice, No Peace Podcast for this invitation. My name is Dr. Jose Silva. And what has motivated me to run is why I've been running my entire life. I've been a social justice advocate and education advocate since I was your age. I first applied for voluntary integrative transfer in 7th grade when I was MLK, because I knew then that the educational system which DPS had for us was a failure. I've dedicated my life to serving the betterment of our community, and I look forward to speaking more to that. But most importantly, it's about Black excellence, Latino excellence. I'm a biracial, Black-Latino man. But more importantly, it's about ensuring that we're in the school-to-prison pipeline and bringing back integrity back to the Denver Public Schools. We have to focus on the budget, equity, reforming the policies and procedures. And then secondly and last, but most importantly, ensuring mental wellness. If we don't have strong mental wellness capacities for our children, then we're not going to be succeeding at all. So that's why I'm running. I'm excited to bring those things. Plus, I would say I'm the most qualified candidate in District Four. I've been doing this work long before I decided to run, and my track record of 28 years speaks to that.
My name is Jean Fashaw. I do have some students that wanted to watch, so I apologize if they get a little loud at times. I grew up in Montbello. I'm a DPS graduate. And I attended the Morehouse College in Atlanta, Georgia, Black Ivy League, for those of you that don't know. And on that campus is where I realized that I was falling in the footsteps of greatness. I went to school with behind folks like Martin Luther King Jr., Spike Lee, Maynard Jackson, and currently Senator Warnock, who's a US Senator right now. And I realized that I have big shoes to fill. And at Morehouse, they talk about servant leadership and how important it is to give back to the community that you came from. So growing up in Montbello and stepping foot on that campus, I saw what excellence looked like for Black men. I'm also Afro-Latino male, Black, and Puerto Rican, to be specific. And I know what it's like to be who I am inside the walls of Denver Public Schools. And there's a saying at Morehouse College, "If back the S looks and there was light." When I stepped foot on campus, the light turned on for me. And when I left campus, I was dedicated to turning that light on for the students that look like me and come from neighborhoods like where I come from. That's why I dedicated my time in coaching, community service, activism, and I'm now an 8th grade math teacher at High Point. So I live that every single day. My whole complete purpose is improving outcomes for Black and Brown children and those that come in from the neighborhoods that I come from. And that is done with the similar to what you guys did with that curriculum, for the Black History Curriculum, the No Justice, No Peace Curriculum. And all that falls under the Black Excellence Resolution. But we also need to continue to work on trauma-informed practices, culturally sustaining environments where we all feel included. Like, I remember walking through MLK and seeing the dolls that Ms. Grayson had put through the building, the Latina dolls, the Black dolls, the Rosetta Stone, the murals in your cafeteria and your auditorium. All that is important, and it needs to be replicated across the district where majority of the students are Black and Brown. And they need to feel represented by the schools that are teaching them. So that's my whole purpose while I'm teaching, while I'm running for school board, is to make sure the outcomes of everybody improve.
Hi, my name's Jane, and I started teaching in the 80s in Aurora. I was at North Middle School, which was right next door to DPS. So I always had a lot of students who went back and forth from Denver to Aurora. But I grew up in Oklahoma. And if you know anything about Oklahoma, that's the land that they gave to the five civilized tribes, and then they turned around and they took it away. And that's where I was raised and learned a very white, European, male version of history and did not know so much about my own ancestry and heritage. I didn't know about the history of our state. And it was not until I was in graduate school here in Colorado that I got the real scoop on so much of what happened, some of it just prior to my lifetime. I started teaching in at North Middle School, and I had students, we were about 50% white, 50% black. But the first thing that struck me was that we were the school that had the worst test scores, and no one cared. And I thought, well, that seems weird. But also, because no one cared, they weren't watching what we did. So we did really cool stuff. We were doing project-based learning before it was a thing. You know, we were taking our students out into the community, and we expected them to, you know, really dive into who they were and what their talents were. And that worked really well because we didn't have test scores that we were accountable to. And our students went on to succeed. And I watched as this system continued to try to make students, especially Black and Brown students, fit into a mold that was designed for the European white people from privilege. And I watched that, and I fought against it, starting in the 80s, when we did an Office of Civil Rights Audit, where they came in and they said, "You know what? We're suspending Black boys at a higher rate than white boys." And one of the reasons I'm in the school board race is because I am frustrated as all get out that we're still having this conversation. So over the course of my career in education, I have continued to do things that, to me, make sense. If students are struggling in math, then we need to look at how we're teaching math, not how to fix the kids who are struggling. So in Aurora, I brought in a new math curriculum, which had great results, a lot of success with students. But what I've seen over the years is those successes also get reversed when a new leader comes in. I went to an alternative high school that had a 22% graduation rate. And we said, "What is it that the students need? And what inspires them? And what ignites their passions and curiosity?" And we designed the school around that. And we went from 22% to 95% graduation rate by making structural changes that helped students succeed rather than put barriers in front of them. I'm running for the board because I understand how the system works, how it's designed. And you can make cosmetic changes or you can make structural changes. And if you change the way that students are being graded, for example, if we stop, like, penalizing kids for late homework, then we change the opportunity for kids to have success. So I'm in the race because I see the structural changes that we need to make.
I really appreciate how each of you are using your past experiences in order to motivate you to make DPS a better school district. So for my next question, Ms. Shirley can answer first, and then Mr. Fashaw, and then Dr. Silva. What do you see as your roles and responsibilities on the board? And what do you believe is the most important responsibility of a board member?
The most important responsibility of a board member is to pick a superintendent, ensure that the goals are aligned to the vision and the values of the district, and then hold the superintendent accountable to results. And that has not happened in DPS for a long, long time. And so when I look at, from a leadership perspective, I've worked in the district central office in Aurora, and I've been a principal. When I look at a classroom, if I have a classroom in my school where kids are failing, then I go to the teacher and I say, "What changes do you need to make?" Because that's a failure of leadership in the classroom. If a school's failing, it's a failure of leadership in the district that isn't providing the support. So that's the number one. We have to have a good superintendent. We have to provide them with goals, and we have to keep them focused. The second thing is to align the community. Right now, our community is really fractured. We've got a whole lot of positional, you know, kind of infighting and opposition. And that's because we are trying to agree on how to do things, and we haven't agreed on what's most important. And I know when I work with, you know, diverse groups, if we can get to a place where we say, "Do we care about the experience of our students? Do we care about the well-being of the young people in our schools?" We're going to agree on that. And once we know what our highest values are, then we have to be accountable to making sure decisions are aligned with that. And I'm sure you guys, as students, you've been so involved. You've seen places where we say one thing and we do another. And it's the board's responsibility to be in front in setting that strategic vision and then holding the superintendent and his team accountable to those decisions.
The board is responsible for setting the budget, hiring the superintendents, as Ms. Shirley just said, and putting policy in place with the move towards policy governance as the model, putting policy in place that supports the actions of Denver Public Schools. My number-one priority is making sure that things like the Blacks Excellence Resolution, removing school resource officers from schools, and all these other legislation that they pass aren't just pieces of paper that get filed away. My goal as a school board member would be to make sure that those things are actionable, and I see the results from any legislation that we pass. It's far too often where legislation that says that they want to do best for Black and Brown kids and for students with disabilities and with English-language learners, but by court mandate, that continues to be a failure. So my goal is to make sure we're holding the superintendent accountable and the district accountable to the outcomes of all of our children, all of your peers, and anybody that's coming behind you guys that enters into Denver Public Schools, where we become an example for the rest of the state instead of a reason why and what not to do when we're serving Black and Brown children and underserved populations. One of my biggest things is really taking those things in action and making them really palatable. Like, I want to see things like your curriculum that you guys brought through and the textbook that you guys presented, and making sure that the entire district has it. Making sure that people, that schools' Black Excellence Plans are actually carried out, not just put on paper and say, "Hey, we did it just to do it." But when I walk into the school, I see those things happening. I want to see the district make an effort towards recruiting, retaining more teachers of color, because research shows that teachers of color have a positive impact on everybody, not just students of color, but every child in our schools. So we need to make sure that we're committed to those things. And every action that we take has to be dedicated to improving outcomes for all of our children. That's why I teach, that's why I coach, that's why I tutor, that's why I work so hard in the community every day, because I am boots-on-the-ground. I know a lot of your friends, I know a lot of your parents. So I will make sure I'm committed to the people that I care about the most, and that's people in my community and kids that look like me and come from neighborhoods like I come from. So thank you for that.
Thank you for this question. Our motto is hashtag nerd to the board. But I am a nerd, I'm a policy nerd. And so our biggest responsibility, our fiduciary responsibility, is to ensure that we hold our superintendent responsible, that responsible for curriculum, outcomes, and learning. But within that, we can't support our superintendent or even their vision if we don't understand our budget and our numbers, if we don't understand the policies and procedures that are negatively impacting our students. I'm the only candidate in District Four that has actually written policy legislation, co-edited legislation, and actually have legislation written and signed by Governor Jeffries, because I understand the nuances of partnerships, not just with Denver Public Schools, but also them working with our state legislators and our municipal leaders to ensure partnership around how do we look at the entire ecosystem of education. So the only way to do that is to support the superintendent, get into a fiscal forensic audit of our budget, and really look about what we're spending. We've been able to corral about $4 million recently. We are spending $75,000 a year to have somebody post in a newsletter monthly, $120,000 a year for one teacher to have a specific coach. Over $4 million so far we've been able to find. Can you imagine what that would do for programs like at your school? With how that would lift up the No Justice, No Peace podcast? Or how we would be able to then pay for the curriculum to implement across the entire school district? As somebody who's sat on boards, somebody who's been a leader in the community, those are the most important pieces, and that's the way I will lead. As I think about the integrity of Denver Public Schools right now, there is none. We have failed in the area of the dissec tree, and we have not fulfilled our duties to the state obligation in which it's been set forth. That means we are in violation of the state. We are in violation right now. And so where is the hoop and the hollering around that? Instead, we've allowed for the last 20 years factions, traditional, charter, non-traditional, to fight against each other and pit against each other. And so as a Democrat, I'm the independent-thinking candidate running in District Four, the one that will get the work done, because I understand no one owns me. And so I'm going to get in there and bring accountability. The word on the street is, everyone's afraid of the accountability lens I'm bringing. Why is that? Because they know that, once we get in there and I'm a leader in the school board, I will ensure the implementation, because I lead this work. I have an entry-to-exit school program, restorative practices, work that I've done for 15 years. There's no metrics to anything that the current Denver Public School Board is doing. They're doing a lot of stuff that is fancy and flashy. But when you get behind the nooks and crannies, there's no metrics, there's no evaluations, and there's no data to create outcomes and actually systemic change. Let's go into Denver Public Schools right now and look at the restorative practice framework. It's different in almost every school, because there's no accountability. I've created framework, this is the things that I've done. My dissertation is on this. And so when we think about electing school board members, let's elect school board members that can get in there and lead on day one. The last piece, I think, is we have to remember, Denver Public Schools and students colored have been purposely ignored. In 1994, I led a walkout to Erv Moskowitz's office, the superintendent, because he ended busing for his kids in the projects. If I understood the nuances in 1994 and have dedicated my entire life to that, then you know for sure that I am ready to lead on day one and hold the superintendent and everyone accountable. So those are the pieces. People could talk about it, but it's have they done the work? Do they know how to implement? And do they understand the schematics? And how to unwind the politicization of our children? Look at who's funding this, and you're to tell you that I'm the independent candidate.
Thank you. I just love, throughout hearing all of you guys speak, I love hearing how passionate you are and how dedicated you are to righting the wrongs of DPS that has been coming forward for decades and decades. And one of the reasons we're on this podcast today, talking about how the district has affected our education. So I just really appreciate hearing the passion you guys' voices. And speaking of our experiences as students, I want to ask you, Ms. Shirley, during this pandemic, students like us suffered a lot from trauma, trauma from the world, trauma from having to be at home and not knowing when you're going to be back in your school building, not knowing, just generally not knowing what's going to be happening in the world the next day. So I want to ask you, the board, what supports would you have put in place for students and staff during the process of coming back?
Boy, that's a big question. And hindsight's 2020, but I was in close contact with a lot of principals as things ramped up and the reality set in that this was a real thing. And what continued to concern me and frustrate me was that we didn't have mechanisms in place to get the direct feedback from our students and their families. No one was collecting data. No one seemed to actually have an ear to the ground to say, you know, "What are we hearing? And what are we inferring as education professionals? You know, what are we sensing that the needs are?" And so if I could go back in time and I had some power in the situation, I would have set up ways and expectations for that information to be coming through to the school leaders, and then for the school leaders to be able to access immediately the resources that they needed. There was such a mess in the communications that were happening that, you know, and things were switching, and everybody felt, I think, at the school level in very reactive modes. And I think that your teachers and principals had a lot of information and also a lot of insight that we didn't have the ability to use to make really good and timely decisions. You have to empower people to say, "We need this, and we need it in an hour." And we have to have a level of trust with our professional educators that we say, "You tell us what you need, and we'll get it to you." And so I don't, I still don't know exactly what the supports are, but I think they were so varied, too, in terms of, you know, people needing access to just some calm and safe space to work, to food, to internet, you know, to ways in which we could have done a better job of just facilitating communication and a sense of belonging, because I think that there was so much isolation that people felt. So it was a big thing. But the lack of a communication system that allowed us to be responsive, I think, would be the thing I would say is the biggest issue.
I love how you really want to, I guess, improve our communication with, like, students and staff so that we can actually implement helpful resources so that everybody can actually be successful. So in terms of, like, improving some things, as we know, in 2019, DPS experienced an increase in gun violence, assault, and theft. So, Mr. Fashaw, as a teacher, what are your thoughts about the safety concerns within the district? And what is your plan to address those issues that students and staff feel safe?
So first and foremost, I appreciate the opportunity to answer this question. I've been in the classroom for five years now as a classroom teacher, and I've substitute taught and volunteered in a number of other schools. And one of the things that I've noticed along the way is that our students, especially students in neighborhoods like Montbello, are criminalized in classrooms and over-disciplined. So I was extremely happy to see that school resource officers were removed from schools. The only problem with that is that there wasn't a plan in place to replace them. So now we see security guards with the same power as police officers with half the training, if that. So we need to have a system in place that puts a focus away from discipline and puts a focus on learning and support. I talked about trauma-informed practices and training our teachers to operate through a trauma-informed lens. That's the first place to address those fractures, not the behaviors, but the fractures that our kids are dealing with. Culturally sustaining environments where kids feel safe to be their true authentic selves so that they can focus on, once again, learning. And we need staff members that are willing to put in that work to support our kids on focusing in the classroom. At Stride Prep Montbello, where I worked for the last four years, we were very punitive early on, when I'm my first year there. But in that four years I was there, we shifted to a lot of those things, including restorative practices and transformative justice, where we saw an environment that was very hostile, and some people didn't feel safe to wear. Without needing officers in the classroom, we were able to make sure kids stayed in class, were actively learning, accountable to their decisions, and we removed the criminality from our school. And I think that's what we need to do as a whole on DPS, on the DPS level. It requires a lot of educating. It requires teachers willing to recognize their identity and who they are and how they show up in the lives of our children, whether you're white, Black, Brown, male, female, non-binary, all of these things. We need to recognize how your identity influences your interactions with our children and operate in a lens of understanding and inclusion. And it's there that we can focus on educating kids instead of turning them into criminals at every stop that we can. So I feel like making sure that we put the focus on learning and getting away from criminalizing is the biggest thing for us right now.
Yeah, I totally agree. I think, I guess, learning more about yourself and learning more about others will definitely decrease that type of, I guess, hostile environment. And it will help students ultimately learn more and feel more safe at school, and they have the ability to learn, like, and be comfortable in their environment. But, Dr. Silva and Ms. Shirley, what is your plan to make sure that all changes within the district are centered around student achievement?
Great question, and thank you. If I can also intertwine a little bit of my answers of those two questions, also with this question. And I want you to repeat that last question, just so I have the right, I want to know exactly what it is. Changes with the district that are centered around student achievement. This is, I love this. So I was, when we talk about trauma-informed and the pandemic, I lead a mental health organization. I'm the CEO for the Colorado Association for Infant Mental Health. We hold the credential and the licensure for anyone that works with babies zero to six. But my father was murdered before I was born. I found my mother's girlfriend dead of a drug overdose when I was four years old. And my best friend was gunned down next to me when I was 14, and he was 12. I was in 8th grade at Rishoe Middle School. My 7th grade friend was shot standing right next to me. I became a victim of a murder and all of a sudden thrown and thrust into a murder trial. Denver Public Schools had no idea what to do with this situation in 1994. In fact, they didn't want to even let me back into school. And it was because of the community groups like GRASP and others that stood forward and said, "No, this young man needs to be able to go to school, and we have to protect him." We're asking a question that US today that hasn't been answered since 1994. That's because Denver Public Schools has failed to put the student first and instead politicized and not looked at trauma-informed practices, not looked at partnership, and not done the work that they needed to do. So as somebody who's experienced gun violence, and when we think about restorative practices and student achievement, it all goes together. Currently, right now, Colorado will be opening up the Colorado Department of Early Childhood, meaning three- and four-year-olds can start going to school. Is Denver Public Schools ready to allow three- and four-year-olds to come into school without understanding the mental wellness of this community, the socio-emotional learning of those communities, or actually creating strong classroom emotional climate for their academic achievement? So if we want to get to academic achievement, we have to think about the entire student, the entire family. And right now, Denver Public Schools doesn't have a plan for them. I reached out to the board members during the pandemic and said, "Coen is here to help you, to provide professional development and all the training." And do you think Denver Public Schools responded? Because they think they know what they're doing, and they don't. And so we need board members that are connected but have actually done this work. I lead this work every single day. So this isn't something me saying, "Coming in and let's do." But I talked about earlier regarding restorative practices. I'm the only candidate in the district that has actually created models in schools, led them, and developed and changed. So academic and student achievement is paired with strong mental wellness. We can't expect students to learn Maslow before Bloom. Maslow means emotional, socio-emotional, all the things they need to be successful first, before then the student achievement. Then we can introduce literacy for all, introduce and change in the policies. And so that's how I'll lead to student academic achievement. If the mental wellness and the whole child is taken care of first, then we can succeed with literacy, math, and test scores.
Dr. Silva, you reminded me of so many things that I had to address when I was teaching at North, because I was there in the late 80s when the gangs started to ramp up, but there was a lot of violence. I had a young man come to school one day in 8th grade, and he was late, and he came up and he said, "Ms., I'm sorry we're late, but we saw a dead body, and we called the police." And I was like, "Okay, that, I didn't do that when I was at school." Like, that, you know. And there were places at that time where that young man would have been told, "Well, you know, get to work." Like, no acknowledgement of the trauma of that. And so I think when you've been close to it and lived it, as Dr. Silva mentioned, you know, you have an empathy that is different. And in my work in education as a teacher, and as a teacher of teachers and a teacher of leaders, you know, it's one thing to have standards, and here's the achievement that we're going after. But then you have to look at the individual need at that time. What do we do to support this individual? Yes, these standards are going to be there. But we also need to be really, we need to have some conversation about the standards themselves. You know, we've bought into this idea that a 4.0 is a great thing. But in the real world, you don't find highly qualified, talented, successful people who are good at everything. They have figured out... They have figured out, here's where my talent and my passion connect. And I go deep and I can also, I have the uh, freedom to explore. So if I want to learn to play the ukulele, which I am and am really bad at, you know, I can do that. But if I was going to get graded on my ukulele playing and, you know, maybe not get to go to college because I suck at the ukulele, then I might not take that risk. So in the idea of achievement, I would like to challenge the paradigms that we have about what a good student is. Because I want our graduates, I want to be taken, oh, look at you. I want to be taken, you know, I want to entrust our future to young people who know who they are, who can advocate, who care about justice, you know, who will stand up and say, this isn't right. Um, and who have been given permission to be who they are and work hard at what they want and say, you know what? This is not a strength of mine and I don't want to spend any more time on it. And, you know, especially when you get to be, you know, 16, 17, 18 years old, you've earned the right to be able to make some of those calls yourself. In my early work, when I would talk like this, people would say, well, I guess you don't have high expectations. And I would say, no, I have very high expectations. I just want to call BS on the system. And, you know, that's before we knew as much as we do now about the origins of standardized tests and what we're holding people accountable to. And now we know it and we're still ignoring it. Um, again, to Dr. Silva's point, I was on the School Performance Framework Committee and it's like, we don't want to uh, improve a racist system. We need to throw it out and start over. And so that's why I'm, you know, so passionate about, about, you know, holding leaders accountable and making sure that we're asking the right questions and we stop just going along with things that, that we don't even question anymore. Racist stuff that we go, oh, well, yeah, let's make sure everyone gets a 4.0. Did I answer the question? I would improve student achievement by first of all, making sure that the um, achievement goals reflected what we know about teaching and learning and what we know about what it takes to succeed. And then I would work to hold schools and leaders accountable to those things.
You, you made me feel better about my ukulele playing.
It was really great to hear that we all acknowledge that there are things that we do need to improve in DPS, especially when it comes to the systems. And we know that students also feel that same way. So I'd love for all you guys to answer this question. Uh, we could go in the order of Ms. Shirley and then Dr. Silva and then Mr. Bishop. Um, we wanted to ask, how do you plan to not only hear, but also act and acknowledge on helping elevating student voices so they feel heard?
You know, uh, one way is to just ask, is this working? Um, oftentimes we say that we've gotten student input. Um, you know, we hold a focus group or we do surveys and we say, all right, we've got the student input, we've made the decision, now let's go forward. And we don't go back and say, so are we doing what you thought we would do or, or is this matching? Um, you know, your ideas for what you wanted. So that follow-up piece is really key. And the, the other thing, and this is kind of connected to something I said earlier, we don't have good mechanisms in place. There, there are ways in which we can create structures that give students opportunities to have input into critical things like course of study and, you know, um, uh, uh, classroom environments and, and, you know, activities and, and opportunities. But we have to do that in, in a, in a more formal way. We have to have processes and protocols. We can't lead it to chance. And so the way that our district's currently structured, you know, we have these five regions and each region has their own um, assigned director. Each school has a collaborative um, school council and many of them are beginning to elevate student voice as your school is. And we can start to put into place regular ways for that input to get collected and um, you know, analyzed. And we can see the trends and patterns, but we can also see the unique needs. Because one thing that school districts do really well is apply one-size-fits-all solutions. And so what I know from my own experience is that you can have standards and outcomes and allow for autonomy and flexibility within that. And um, but that has to be done through intentional design. And currently it's just left to chance or left to, you know, ambitions and just, you know, the will of young women like you who say, nope, you're going to listen to us. But, but we need to learn from you, but make it more accessible to all of our students.
Jane, Jane, those are, that's, those are spot on. I think um, for myself, in 2007, I ran for the Denver Public School Board for District Five. I lived out in West Denver, Northwest Denver. And during that run, one thing that was told to me by students was, we don't have school supplies, right? Like our parents do not have money for school supplies. And so you know what I did? I started a school supply drive in 2008. And in the last 13 years, we've given out 25,000 backpacks. It's because I listened to the needs of the students of Denver Public Schools then. You know what they also told me? We don't know what to do during the end of the school year. We, we don't know where all the resources are. So you know what I did? I partnered with the mayor's office in DPS to create a resource guide for the students at the end of the school year that the students of Denver Public Schools should receive. Because that's what students told me that they needed. And this was just me as a community leader, right? As an activist who used some networks that I had and decided to go out and start raising money to answer the needs of the students. So this isn't just something that I'm going to do when I become a school board member. It's something that I've been doing my entire career. I've been a teacher, I've been in the classroom, I've been a dean, I've been a school leader. I've been now a CEO of color, leading a, a predominantly white organization. I got there because I'm a good listener. I've been able to be successful because I'm a good listener. First and foremost, I think it's important for school board members to be responsive to our, to our children, to our students. So responsive means uh, including and creating the kitchen cabinet for District Four students. Uh, you may not know what a kitchen cabinet is, but in our campaigns, the kitchen cabinet are those individuals that are your inner circle, that are guiding you, that are giving you advice, that are telling you which way to go, um, what not to say. That's your voice. That's a place you should have because we're working for you, right? We are elected individuals to support the needs of the children of Denver Public Schools. So being responsive, creating the kitchen cabinet, and then ensuring that you and your voice is listened to on the Student Board of Education. But more importantly, just not placating you there, but actually allowing you to have a voice. See, when we talk about giving students voice, it's in the work that I do and that I've done for many, many years, leading coalitions or sitting on boards. But each year we give out school, we give out transport backpacks to students because that's what DPS students said they needed. And so this isn't something that I will just do. This is something that I will do. And then lastly, um, we need a school board member that knows how to chat and has compassion, right? And will stand up to all those individuals that are funding them and telling them which way to go. That's what we need. That's the kind of school board member I think that you all need and want.
As a, as a classroom teacher, I have my, my ear to the ground, so to speak. Um, not just in the schools that I, not in the schools that I work in, but in the community that I work in. I tutor right now. I coach youth sports. I do a lot of things on the gra- on, on the grass, on the ground level. And my ear is always to the community. Uh, one of the biggest things for me is to amplify the voice of the community. I went through the reimagining Montbello process because I worked at a school that was involved there. And it was important that, what I noticed was that the district didn't do a good job of hearing everybody's voice or taking everybody's feelings into consideration. Or reaching out to those who may not understand how to give themselves a voice in, in decisions. So my whole purpose would be to make sure that we're building bridges to the community so that they can be actively involved in the decision-making process and influence decisions that impact the lives of our children in our communities. So that's my main focus as I go forward, is to make sure the voices of the unheard get heard and that they have a chance to express themselves and put forth every effort that they can. Such as the Student Bill of Rights, which I saw a lot of students advocated for, such as the No Justice, No Peace curriculum that I saw a lot of, that you guys were fighting so hard for. All those things are necessary and should be amplified. I remember sitting in a project voice presentation not too long ago and watching the brilliance in our young folks. We don't give enough credit to the brilliance in, in our young people at all. I've had better conversations with sixth graders than I have had with adults around some key issues that we're all dealing with right now. Whether that's racism, um, hate speech, a lot of other things, violence, a- and, and the, the list goes on and on. And those conversations are more fruitful with children who have an interesting perspective than adults who are kind of stuck in their old ways. So I definitely want to include everybody, no matter their age, as long as they're involved in creating a better district for everybody. Then we all deserve a place at the table to have those difficult conversations and come up with solutions to make our district an example for everywhere else in this country.
I really love how we're all able to know that amplifying student voices is really important. I think that's really valuable. I wanted to ask Dr. Silva and Mr. Bishop, um, how will students be involved in the curriculum, the decisions and commitments made to ensure that these changes are what's best for the actual students?
That's a great question. And uh, it reminds me of my time at Denver West High School. And I was in Chicano Studies and Chicano Studies was being taught by a white guy named Mr. Buck, who was getting all of the historical facts wrong. And as somebody who grew up in the movement and activist movement, I kept raising my hand. And, and I didn't even need this credit, but I was like, this is not okay. And so that in 1997, 98, right, we then knew then. And so I think it's important for us to lift up our student voices to think about what the individualized curriculum could look like that you all create, that you all lean on. Uh, not just uh, we're thinking about Black excellence, but Latino excellence, AAPI, really for Indigenous students so that they can see themselves in the literature, in the history. And so I think it's important for you all to sit on that, sit and, 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 and offer voice to the curriculum decision and development. That currently hasn't happened and you've been placated with, yes, come before us. But where's DPS's dollars in ensuring that every textbook you guys put forward is in every DPS school, right? We, we put you out there and they've put you all over the country. But yet if they made the financial investment, it's, those are the things we should be pushing to say, why isn't this textbook in every school? Why is it that have school districts have, schools have to decide if they want to purchase it? Nope, DPS should purchase this book for the entire school district. Let's purchase it and let's make it available to parents, right, in libraries so that everyone can have a hand on it. Because that's the important piece. And so as you think about, uh, and as I think about leading, it's ensuring then the kitchen cabinet, if you all being on the kitchen cabinet will help inform some of those decision makings for me, uh, to help create better curriculum that suits you all.
Can I answer that since Mr. Fashaw isn't here? Um, you know, when I was a, a principal in Aurora, um, we started doing um, project-based learning. And um, as the teachers got better at developing the projects, they began to pitch the projects to the student body. So they would develop the project. First they'd get input on what, you know, students were really interested in, in investing themselves in. And then they would design projects and it became a, a, a very collaborative affair. It wasn't just, you know, well, I happen to like dinosaurs, so I'm going to teach a dinosaur unit, you know, but really what, what was relevant and important. And then it was also the teacher's responsibility to, to design the project so that those needed skills in writing or in uh, technical reading or in research were being built inside of that project. And I think it's really powerful. With younger students, it's often a matter of um, really observing and asking, why did you, why did you struggle with this? Or why are you having trouble in the lesson? What do you think, you know, is, is, uh, is challenging for you? Because if we listen to them, we might hear something like, well, the teacher just talks all the time. And there's no pictures and I can't remember without pictures. Young people, um, as was mentioned, are brilliant and they can tell us what they need. So there's certainly some curriculum, you know, like in math, for example, that, that, you know, there's stuff out there that's research-based and it's strong and it is really supportive of kids' learning. But even then, we have to be watching and noticing and asking, is this working? How could we improve it? Um, and, you know, when a student is struggling, it's not, what do we need to do to fix the student? It's saying to the student, how can I help? What do you need? Because, you know, that, that, that's who we should be designing for.
If I could just add to that, um, I led a school, Catalyst High School, and it was all individualized-based project learning for students on the spectrum. And these were students that most schools felt like they couldn't be successful. And I was like, no, students, all students can learn. And the project-based learning allowed them to look and learn and develop and become phenomenal students. And they all went on to college. A lot of them went on to college. They're doing different work. But these were students on the spectrum that our school system said were not valued and that weren't going to be able to be successful. Individualized project-based learning really supported their, their academic achievement. I just wanted to throw that.
I agree. I really think that project-based learning has given a way to implement equity within our schools. And speaking of equity, I wanted to ask, um, the both of you guys, do you guys realize that there are in, systems of inequality in DPS?
Oh, so, so let's first, I want to name something because um, when we talk about equity, equity is simply addressing the disparities. And if we want to do that, then that's the work. And if we are addressing disparities in DPS, then we're going to dismantle the disparities, right? And so when we talk about equity work, we should use the lens of, of what, addressing the disparities. And we know there are disparities in curriculum, in funding, in resources, right? But we can't address the equity issue if we don't know our budget issue. And if we, and we can't address the budget issue if we don't have our policies and systems in place and the system is old and archaic. And so that's where DPS is. DPS is working in an old-fashioned, old archaic. And so everything we're doing is just patchwork, right? We have Black excellence, okay? And we have the, the Dr. Sharon Bailey Equity Report. But where's the teeth to that and the metrics to that to dismantle, right? And, and we, because the system is so archaic and so entrenched, we're not willing to say, to address the disparities means ensuring that HR is hiring individuals of color. And people that graduated on my doctorate, class 25 of them, not one of them are in, in, at, working at DPS. And so when we talk about those levels, it's about addressing all the disparities in every single piece of the system of Denver Public Schools. Some say it's dismantling, some say it's unwinding. What I say is it's finally addressing, addressing the purposely ignored, right? Let's stop saying it's underserved. No, we have purposely ignored factions of students. And if we use that lens, then equity is something we can all get on board on because it's addressing every single disparity in Denver Public Schools.
So I'll give you a couple of very specific examples. Uh, when I, when I took over uh, as principal at William Smith, I had students who would come into ninth grade, having failed ninth grade twice. So they'd be 16 years old. Um, and one young man in particular um, kept dropping out and had never passed Algebra I. And so he came in, but he was 18 and he had, and so I put him in the second year of integrated math and the second day of class, the teacher came and said, he needs to move up. And this kid had brilliance in the area of mathematics and was able to take calculus as a high school student at the community college. Equity means that I meet that, that young man when he comes in and says, what do you, what do you want in terms of your own life? You know, you're 18, so they're, you know, what's your passion? And uh, what, what do you want, what are you interested in pursuing and how can we help you? And in mathematics, we could help by first of all, you know, getting him uh, access to the courses that he actually needed. On the same side of that, I had a young man who started in ninth grade, having been in eight schools in nine years. And, you know, having moved around many, many, many times and who was not proficient in English in the ninth grade and had been in our school system all that time. How in the heck did that happen? And so when he comes into high school, traditionally, you give him his seven-period day or maybe you make him double up on literacy because that's his area of weakness. No, this was a young man who had failed and failed and failed and, and been, you know, treated uh, as less than for so many years. And so we looked to see where can we connect him in a way that will captivate and motivate and engage him. And we got him into the welding program at the uh, Technical College next door at Pickens. Um, and by the way, that was against the rules because ninth graders can't go to Pickens, except that I worked with another leader who said, what's best for this young man. And so the simple thing that I did at William Smith that took us from 22% to 95% graduation is I stopped making permanent grades until students were ready to say, okay, transcript it. Because it's not fair if a student comes in and easily scores, you know, high on a, on a standardized test. Or a student comes in and has had, you know, certain advantages or just happens to have, you know, a, a, an interest or, or an aptitude for something. And they're not working hard to excel and someone else comes in and says, you know, I haven't had the advantages. English is not my first language. Um, you know, my family- English is not my first language, um, you know, my family's moved many times. That's not equity. What we care about is how how the outcome ends up at the end. And if students can end up in the same place. We we don't reward students who didn't have to work hard to get there, I guess is what I'm saying. So once we stopped doing that, once we said, we're not failing any ninth graders. We give feedback, we say, here's where you are. And then teachers took on the responsibility to say, okay. They're not quite there yet. Here's what still needs to get worked on. But they go on to tenth grade. And the tenth grade and the ninth grade math teachers work together. And at some point, the light bulb switches on, oh, okay, now I get it. And that's how learning actually happens. And so at that point, then the student gets the A or the B for ninth grade and for tenth grade. And what people would do is criticize, they'd be critical and they say, well, that's not fair. If they can do the work, if we're really, you know, focused on the outcome. Then it's where they end up, not how long it took or or what they had to do to get there. And as a result, students like my own son, who would have in a traditional high school. Been locked out of so many things because he wouldn't have even had a three-point-oh. He graduated with a three-point-four. Because he was given the time and the support. And so that's an example of a structural change. There's no law that says we have to grade kids every nine weeks and then put it on their permanent record. Um, because we know it's like, if a young person gets two Fs in their first quarter of high school, how demoralizing that is. And crawling out of that deficit is crazy. We don't have to do that. That doesn't mean we don't, you know, hold people accountable. Doesn't mean that we're not assessing and giving feedback. It means we're not penalizing. And and so when we talk about equity, we do look at the policies. We have policies that are throwing graduation requirements on young people that are not relevant to who they are and what they want. Oh, you have to take four years of PE? Okay, well, I want to be a lawyer and I'm ready to go to law school. Nope, sorry. You're not going to graduate because you didn't have that fourth year of PE. We do that to our our students all the time. Those are the kinds of things that we have to go in there and look at and say, does this make sense? And and does it make sense in the in the term of it's supporting our young folks? To achieve the goals that they've been able to set for themselves. And if the answer is no, then get rid of it. Cut it out.
I completely agree. Like, I don't think I could add anything on to that. I just really. Like, I just really appreciate hearing you guys talk so much about like specific examples because a lot of times. And discussions where if you do pick up the inequities in our systems that are failing students every day, they're really vague and they don't really get into like. What's actually being done to students that doesn't make their education beneficial to them. So I just really appreciate hearing you guys get into good detail about that. And speaking about efforts to fix the inequities in our system, I want to ask, um, first, Mr. Early and then Dr. Silva. Regarding our no justice, no peace resolution that was passed in October of twenty by the previous school board. What does this resolution mean to you and what are you going to do to uphold it throughout your term?
Well, accountability, like like we've talked about earlier, is the resolution lays out some expectations. And so we need to be diligent about following up and seeing that those expectations have been met. So this curriculum was adopted, what was, well, actually, not even at that point. As as we look at a new curriculum adoption, we need to be asking, what's the plan? Who's going to be involved? What are the um, criteria by which you're going to be measuring? And as board members, it will be on us to be checking in and saying, does this match? Do we have a sign-off on the on the students who um, either initiated this or are continuing to sport it once you guys are graduated? Um, that's the, you know, these resolutions get passed and then they get put into. Uh, well, actually now it's just into uh, technology land. And they live there and no one even knows what they are. People talk about policy all the time. Do you know how many policies there are in DPS right now? It is extraordinary. And m- many of them haven't been looked at since two thousand eleven or two thousand thirteen. I I could only find two policies that have been revised and one of them was an HR issue around due process for EEOC complaints. And and it's horrible. It hasn't been vetted and I'll tell you, it's not good. And so when we pass these resolutions, it's sort of like, yay, look what we did. We feel really good about ourselves as, you know, the adults. Oh, look, we had students and we made a resolution and, you know, had a big thing. Who cares, right? Who cares until things change? And so we need to be seeing the results. And I would come back to you guys and ask you, because I don't know this. Um, what are the results that you're expecting? How fast do you want this to go? You know, um, how, how much depth? We've talked about, you know, his history, um, lessons and and, you know, um, materials that reflect the diversity, but. You know, how fast and how far? What are your expectations? Because I think we need to be mindful of that as well. We can't take ten years to study this, you know, and oh, well, you know, let's do another study and here's what we found. And so now we're going to have to put a committee together to talk about. Uh, making a plan to have a, to plan the curriculum development. And and that's how things usually go. It it's very laborious and and uh, it tries my patience. Results, I mean, that that's, that's, and not only, let me just add one more thing. The re- results can't just be that we got some new books. What is different for our students? What, what are the successes that we can correlate to the change? You know, we have to name what we expect and then we have to look and see if we've got it. Because we could go through and do a whole bunch of curriculum adoptions and get all kinds of new books and not get a single. Change in the actual experience of the students. So those things have to always be tied together and we have to be constantly monitoring every facet of of the issue.
I would, um, to echo some of those sentiments, I, you know, I think there are seven more as's and there's four. Uh, nuances in which we will return back to in two years and I can tell you, um, by my own evaluation. Um, there hasn't been developed consistent processing for curriculum revisions. I don't believe that has been uh, is happening, engaging in the feedback loops. And but more importantly, the internal and external curriculum review and revisions, right? When we think about those pieces, there are pieces that have been laid in there to be held accountable. But there is not a track or mechanism, again. Ms. Shirley mentioned this, I've mentioned this. Um, when you talk about systems that conglomerate which DPS is. You need to have leaders that have the foresight that can go in and actually enact these things, create accountability. For the last, we've had five super, six superintendents with interns over the last two years, right? When we talk about, are they just placating or where is the work being done? We need school board members that are going to go in there and say, we're going to hold you accountable to to the no justice, no peace resolution. What is the metrics that meet and the outcomes and the evaluation? But more importantly, who is going to be accountable for that? Because then if there is somebody accountable for that, then then we can create, okay, this is tied to your academic performance. This is tied to your position. There is no one. That says, that that's the CEO of the no justice, no peace resolution, or any resolutions in Denver Public Schools that ensuring that it's happening. Right? There isn't. And so I, this is my frustration why I'm running, right? Because I've been holding DPS accountable for years at DPS board meetings. Holding them accountable, all school board members, right? I'm running not because I want to or I have to, but because we need integrity back in the school board. Right? We need individuals that know the work and that can hold people accountable. That's the piece, right? When we talk about accountability, this is one area that Denver Public Schools has not been accountable to you all, to you all, to our parents or to our community. And my question to the other board members, uh, to the other candidates, in my particular, my district, is. What what have you done previously that can show that there's meat and guidance to ensuring that you can create accountability? Like, what faction of that work? And so I think my background speaks to going in, um, and my name is Mr. Accountability, and so no one pays my mortgage. So they're going to have to deal with somebody coming in and cleaning house and that's the kind of leadership we need.
Again, I want to say thank you for the hard work that you all did to 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 make that possible. Um, having accountability is huge. That 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 seems to be the the key word right now. Um, going back to even as far as critically CRT, um, right, Critical Race Theory. Um, a lot of tho- those ideas are based on paper, not being actionable. Um, you can put legislation in place, but if you didn't replace the people. Or or hold the people accountable to those pieces of paper, then then that piece of paper has no meat. Has has no substance to to be impactful. So I feel like the no justice, no peace resolution was the first step. Um, over the next two years, there's a, there's some commitments listed in there that we have to make sure that we follow. Including the feedback loop, including revisions to the curriculum. But it also is going to require a a, a a hard look at ourselves as a district and the people that we have in front of our kids. And making sure that the people that have that curriculum are are teaching it correctly. Believe in what it's doing and and the value that it has. And making sure that 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 the value that it that it provides i- is being carried out in the classroom. Because our kids deserve to see themselves reflected in the things that they're learning, the truth that's being told. And and that 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 takes a lot of work from a lot of different perspectives, whether that's. Me as an educator and all the other educators that are committed to that work. Principals and administrative staff. Um, administration in central office and the communities that that our kids are coming from. Have to be heard and 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 willing to put in the work to hold our schools accountable to those things. Um, it's very important that our district does the work necessary to make this more equitable. And I I I heard the, some of the answers to what does equity look like? It means that we're, we're coming from a place that everybody has whatever they need to get to the same, to get to access to opportunity. There's a picture that I remember seeing, it's a cartoon where you have a a fence. Equality is where everybody has the same size stepping stool. Some people can see over the fence, some people can't see over the fence. But equity is where everybody has the exact stepping stool that they need to 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 see over the fence. And and everybody has access to that same opportunity. Everybody has the support that they need. I go back to those trauma-informed practices, culturally sustaining environments, which you guys have contributed to create. But we have, the the work is just beginning. We have to continue to put forth resolutions and and policy that continues to foster a a, an environment of. Equity in everything that we do, where everybody see, feels seen. Everybody has an opportunity, have themselves reflected, even in a math classroom, whereas sometimes that's the hardest thing to to give equitably. I I talk about deficit thought in my classroom quite a bit. And unfortunately, deficit thought is like a, it's like a plague running through the minds of the kids that I see, especially my black and brown children. Because the way the system's set up, it kind of makes too many people look through. Look at math in a, in a deficit lens where it's like, I'm just not a math person, I'm just not good at math. And that thing, that that kind of ideology kind of runs rampant everywhere else in school as well. So it's going to be a matter of the district as a whole taking responsibility, disrupting that deficit thought. And converting those fixed mindsets to growth mindsets where all of our kids feel like they can tackle problems. No matter how difficult or no matter how daunting, that they can make things happen no matter what they're faced with. And that's going to take a group effort from everybody involved. Every stakeholder needs to be involved in that. And I modeled that with my two master's degrees, whether it's in teaching, whether it's a master of science in biotechnology. So I want to be an example for the kids that look like me and come from the neighborhoods like mine. To do the things that's necessary to start changing the dynamic and breaking some of these generational curses that exist. And that includes the problems that we see in our classrooms.
Um, we really appreciate seeing and hearing how passionate you are about making our district really. Up to par and making our district have improvements. And we really enjoyed learning so much about each of you during this interview. But before we end, we would love to hear a quick twenty-second elevator speech on why you think you should be on the school board. Um, it can go, um, Ms. Shirley first and then Dr. Silva and then Mr. Fashol.
Twenty seconds, that's a challenge. Uh, I'm an experienced educator, thirty-four years. I also am a leader of transformational change. So I have the track record of results that I will demand of other people. Uh, I tell the truth. I tell the truth as fast as I can. Reality is an acquired taste. But I think we have to be grounded in reality and I keep my promises.
Here we go. Uh, first and foremost, thank you so much for the opportunity, for the opportunity to be able to be with you all. I would say a specialty in my professional personal approach to community engagement is my orientation of multiculturalism. The embracing and celebrating of the individual differences. One of my key strengths is demonstrated comprehension of complex factors when conceptualizing systems of domination and oppression and appropriately addressing these issues. That's a leader that I've been for the last twenty-eight years. That's a leader that I will continue to be. I have experience, I'm ready, but most importantly, I'm guided by my faith, by my wife and my children and my community that lifts me up. Thank you all so much.
As a husband, a father, a teacher, a community leader. I have seen many times, far too often, things go go to the wayside in communities like Mont Belo, for example. And it is my commitment, regardless of where my support comes from and things like that, but I will be steadfast in my foundation of family and community. To put the kids that I see every day in the communities that I come from and that I grew up in, first and foremost, in every decision that I make. It is, it is important that our kids and our our communities have every resource necessary for our villages to thrive. There's an old saying, like African tribe that talks about how are the children? How your children are determines how your community is doing. So when people ask me, how are the children, I want to be able to say the children are well. And that's going to take a lot of hard work, a lot of difficult conversations, a lot of arguing and fighting. But as long as we're all committed to a common goal, then we can make that happen to make sure all the children are well. So thank you guys for having me today. Continue that good work that you guys are doing. And don't stop because you guys are just getting started. And I look forward to seeing the work that you guys do when you guys get up in age and start getting gray in the hair like me and Mr. Silva and Ms. Shirley. So I look forward to it and thank you guys for having me.
On today's episode, we discuss what motivates our candidates to run for their seat on the board. What they want to bring to DPS and their commitment to the education of DPS students. To our board members, regardless of the outcome on November second, continue doing the work because students' lives literally depend on it. There are so many other students and student organizations within DPS that want and deserve to be heard. And you are one of the main people who should be in their audience and bring their change into the district. Work to confront the inequities happening in your community and create a space where student voice is elevated in the center of all decisions being made. You cannot effectively serve your students and your schools if you're not willing to hear what they have to say.
And I just want to say a quick thank you. I've been to a few forums so far and this is by far the most. Uh, interesting and impactful and uh, was a valuable use of my time. So thank you.
Keep up the good work. You're our future. Thank you so much.
I want to say thank you to to the three uh, candidates that also run. I look forward to. Working with you guys and debating and going through the motions and I'll see you guys tonight, I'm sure.
We also wanted to reciprocate that. Thank you. Thank you guys so much, Ms. Shirley, Mr. Fashah, Mr. and Dr. Silva. I'm and part of the team. We just wanted to really give you guys a lot of appreciation for being on our podcast today. We really are appreciative for your time. So thank you so much. You can follow us on our Facebook page, No Justice, No Peace, The Take. Email us at kjkpthetake@gmail.com. Make sure to also subscribe to our YouTube channel, No Justice, No Peace, The Take. Make sure you give us your feedback through our social media and thank you once again for joining us. Until next time.